Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then, okay, thanks. We're just finished.
We're in the work session.
Okay, we just got a minute left here.
Although we're online.
What's that? I know, I know. Okay, we gotta kind of move forward at this point. So if staff could summarize for us, please, the closed session.
Certainly, for public benefit, the city council just adjourned a closed session, closed pursuant to statute thirteen D. point zero five, seven three B. Attorney-client privilege to discuss enforcement action related to the fire services contract. Staff and the attorneys were given direction. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, so with that, I will adjourn the work session. And wait about ten seconds, and then I'm gonna... Don, thanks. Have a good evening. You don't need to stick around.
Thanks, John.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Same to you.
Okay, I got a call to order, the November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Long Lake City Council at six thirty-one P. M. All council members are present this evening. Item number one is a pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is mayor comments, Long Lake News, meeting review and updates. So just a couple of updates this evening. First of all, the city council just finished a closed work session where we discussed enforcement action related to the fire services contract. Had a closed session with our legal team. What else has been going on here? Last Thursday, I went to the retirement event of Wayzata Police Chief Mark Schultz, who's, of course, our police chief for Long Lake as well. Great event, great turnout there. Chief Schultz will be working, I think, through this next week as well. We wish him well in his retirement and next chapter of his life. I think he might be leading the Light the Night Parade next Friday in Wayzata. So go and check that out if fall is quiet in Long Lake. Enjoy that event. I know our Long Lake Fire Department has been invited to participate in that parade as well. Tree lighting event, otherwise just moving forward to things on the horizon. Tree lighting event on Friday, December sixth, at five thirty P. M. at Holbrook Park, correct?
That's right.
So we'll have some information out on that on our city list, I'm sure, in the coming days. And related to that as well is holiday decorating contest, our annual event, that encourages residents to go and decorate their yards and homes and things like that on the exterior at least. And we have a competition for that and some good prizes coming up. So we'll get more information out about that in the near future as well. It's a fun time of the year to be engaging in those kinds of events. And of course, we have Thanksgiving coming up around the corner here. I know city offices will be closed on Thanksgiving and on Friday as well. So we'll probably talk more about that at the end of the meeting, but wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving before we forget to do that. With that, though, that's all the updates at this time. We also, another upcoming event is the fire department, what is that called? The toy drive. I think the auxiliary runs a toy drive event, so hopefully we'll get information out on that as well. I think that is, is that the day? Is that the seventh? I think it is the seventh, the day after the tree lighting event. So yet another event on the horizon here. Great. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item four to approve this evening's agenda. Anyone want to make them?
I can make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item five, consent agenda. Items A through D on the consent agenda this evening. Any questions for staff regarding items on the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion on this one as well.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second. All right, motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council. And comments shall be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach for open comments this evening? Yes, sir. Come on up. Tell us who you are.
Thank you very much for having me.
We're switching over our I.T. here, so give us a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Mike Dash. I am chair of the Orno School Board, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on the Orno schools.
The mic.
Need the mic.
Okay.
He was coming.
I remind people that myself. I get that. So thank you very much. I want to make sure that before we start, in case Councilmember Divak has not had the opportunity to brag yet, just as a reminder, the Orno girls swim and dive team are the state champions. They knocked off Visitation High School, who had been the ten-year-in-a-row defending state champions. They knocked them off a couple of weeks ago. Councilmember Divak's daughter was one of the members of that team and is in the picture here in the Pioneer. And I think came in sixth place in her relay. Is that right?
She did, yeah.
So Casey has not bragged to you about that. That's a pretty cool deal to be state champion.
That's fun for them, first time ever, I think.
First time ever, yes.
They got the police and fire escort back into town and it was kind of fun, yeah.
It was quite impressive, a bunch of fire trucks and police cars. It was really neat. So you should congratulate them frequently because it's a cool deal. So I was here a year ago to talk about, to solicit your ideas on our strategic plan. And I thought, oh, you know, I ought to come back and give you some feedback on, did that actually work? So if we can go to the next slide, oh, by the way, let's start. I have a copy of that for each of you, so if you can take one and just pass it around. We'll talk about this a little bit. So this is kind of a graphic of what we did with this. But again, we were here a year ago asking for your input. We got comments from over a thousand people on our strategic plan, and I think that's pretty good. We started last fall and finally adopted it last spring. We had a core planning team that I think was thirty-one or thirty-two members, that actually, people that met for two days in March, two solid days of work. And we made sure we invited skeptics to that group. So the people that had expressed skepticism about the Orno schools or what we were doing, we made sure that they were there, so we heard their voices. So if we can go to the next slide. So some of the findings, and this is, these are, these are all positive things. We did not find fundamental flaws in what we were doing as we looked at this. But, you know, we said we have very high expectations for all of our kids, and we realize that there's, everyone is unique, but we have very high expectations for them. One of the strongest words that came out of this is connectedness. And you'll see that as one of the strategic goals and how we want to make sure that as these students are in Orno schools and leave Orno schools, that there is a connectedness to not only their classmates and their teachers, but the whole community that they're in. And we think that's a very important part of what we do as part of a public school district. We want great academics. We want great staff. We want to partner with parents. That's kind of obvious, but this is a partnership with parents. We're not doing this without parents. And the expectation is that we have excellence. That is the going-in expectation. It's not average or okay, it's excellent. So the next slide, some more of those findings. Again, the feedback from the community, the thousand people, was, the words they used were affirming and aspirational. So this is, again, the community is expecting us to be, expecting us to be out there and be a leader. A lot of pride, we would argue justifiably so. We expect academic excellence in core content. I mean, we expect our, we're not shying away from that, that we expect that core content of math, reading, writing, science, that we expect our kids to leave Orno schools, very proficient in that. You know, everybody said they would recommend Orno schools, and that matters. We're in a competitive environment, and we are in the business of attracting and retaining students. And so that's really important to what we do. And we think that we have a caring school community. As you know, there was a tragedy in our community last week, and the schools were part of rallying around and providing that support for not only the family, but for the other students. And that was a very important part of what we do. So the next slide. So you have the strategic plan. You can see our vision. You can see our mission. I'm not going to repeat those for you. You can read that. But we really think that this is what's going to guide us for the next couple of years and the goals that... And what we see as a board with a staff is, as they come and make presentations to us, what they're doing, whether it's boring stuff like facilities or stuff like how we're teaching third graders to read better or something like that, every one of those is grounded in what this strategic plan is. To talk to us about, you know, that we are, that is the base of what we're trying to do every single day of what we see from the staff. And that we expect that as a board, and we're seeing that as our staff delivers that. So I'd like to share some statistics with you. So if we can look at the next slide. As you know, college is expensive. And so one of the things that most of our students end up going to college, over ninety percent of our graduates every year enroll in a post-secondary program. But part of this is, let's talk about what kind of college experiences and credit opportunities they have as high school students at Orno. So we look at this, we have what's called dual enrollment. Well, these are high school classes that, again, the teachers are certified to teach college credit classes at Orno High School. And we had twenty-one percent of our class of two thousand twenty-four take and pass one of these dual enrollment classes. The biggest component, and we'll talk more about this, is AP or Advanced Placement. We have twenty-three AP classes at Orno High School, which for a school our size is amazing. Because, you know, the problem is, if you have only two kids in a class, you can't afford to have a teacher with just a handful of kids. So part of the ability to offer AP classes is starting in intermediate school and middle school, is getting kids ready to take AP classes, and you'll see this in the next slide. But eighty-four percent of our kids took an AP class in the twenty-three that we have. We had eight percent that enrolled in classes at Hennepin Technical College. Again, things, and that's, you know, that may be, you know, rather than kids that don't want to go to college looking for technical skills that we don't offer, we support kids that do that. And then PSEO, which is post-secondary enrollment options, where kids can enroll in a local college for a class and get credit for both high school and college credit. So what you see there is ninety percent of our class did some kind of classwork that could earn them college credit while they were still an Orno high school student, potentially saving their families lots of money, but also really getting them prepared for college. So the next slide is about AP classes. AP is a national standard, again, the, it is the measure of excellence across the country of the rigor of classes, you know, whether it's math classes, whether it's science classes, reading, literature classes. This is the standard. And what you see here is some amazing statistics that this year, a thousand, we have a thousand fifty-five AP course enrollees. So that means, I mean, some students are taking more than one, but we have six hundred and eight of our nine hundred, approximately nine hundred students in an AP class. Almost half of our ninth graders are taking an AP class this year. Because we've prepared them for that, starting in middle school, that about half of our ninth graders are taking an AP class. And so we expect that as that cohort goes through, that these numbers are going to go up more. But this, it's these numbers that drive those national rankings. And these numbers, when you compare them to any of the other big high schools that you see in the west metro, whether it's Wayzata, Edina, Minnetonka, our numbers look as good, if not better, than those schools, that the percent of our kids that are taking AP classes and the number of AP classes that we're taking. And this is, this is, again, what drives the national rankings that you see. So let's talk about the next slide, which is, let's talk about test scores. If you've listened to any national or state or local news or social media, you've heard that test scores are declining. Unfortunately, a soundbite, as you've learned, is not very good analysis. So the most common test score that we have in Minnesota is the MCA, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. Public education is the biggest budget line in Minnesota's state budget for T-12 education. So it's not unreasonable for the state to set standards for math, reading, and science for every grade. It's about accountability. And we want to be sure our students have learned, not just been taught, certain standards at each grade. And we test for, we test for that, and then we can look by school district to see how individual schools are doing in meeting those standards. In theory, it's a great and appropriate concept. It's a great idea, appropriate concept that we do that. Now, one of the things that the state of Minnesota has done to make sure that these tests remain valid is they established a rule that if a student doesn't take the test, the score for the school lists that student as not proficient. Now, one of the reasons for that is this prevents schools from conveniently sending weaker students on a field trip. I'm serious, on the day of the MCA class, rather than dragging down their school test scores. Again, it's a reasonable plan to do this. So here's the challenge in a public setting. How does an excellent school district like Orno say we need to look beyond the MCA tests, which are not very good, and to say what's really happening while, without looking like we're trying to avoid accountability? How can we say the standards are reasonable, which we think they are, without, but questioning the test results? And again, it looks like we're trying to avoid accountability. And how do we reconcile mediocre MCA test results with what we say are outstanding academics? It's really hard to do, because it looks like we're trying to dodge the issue. So here's something that we've been incredibly successful at. We are really good at teaching our students how to be analytical and good consumers. Our high school students have learned that taking the MCA test does not affect the grade of the class, of the course that they're taking, does not affect their ability to graduate, does not affect their ability to get into the college of their choice, does not affect their ability to get college credit for eligible courses. So in the spring, when they're facing rigorous coursework, AP tests, spring sports, concerts, prom, whatever, they and their families opt out of studying for and taking the meaningless MCA test. While they know they're proficient, the state of Minnesota records them as not proficient in that subject. So what we're seeing is a huge increase in the number of students that are opting out of taking the MCA tests. And as a result, our MCA test scores, because they're listed as not proficient when they opt out, are plummeting. So if you looked at the MCA test scores, you would say, this is not very impressive. But that's why, and we're seeing that number grow. Again, our students are smart. They figured out that it doesn't matter. Even though we've tried to say, hey, school spirit, you know, this is important for your school, please take the test. If you've got a lot of other stuff going on, you and your family are just going to say, nah, I don't need to do it. So how else do we assess students? Well, the second part that we looked at, so we've looked at, we look, here are the students that the state says are proficient. Well, eighty-nine percent of our students take the ACT, again, another national test. And the ACT has a component of it that they list college readiness, in English, reading, math, and science. And so what we found is, people that opted out of that tested proficient in one of those ACT college readiness things. So while they weren't proficient on the MCA test in that topic, ACT said they're proficient. We also looked at their coursework in the appropriate class. So for example, if it's Algebra II, if you got an A or B in Algebra II, even though you opted out of the test two years later when you were a junior, we're going to think, if you had an A or B in that class, you're proficient. And so when you look at all those measures of proficiency, the kids that took the MCA test, they were proficient. The kids that were proficient based on ACT being college readiness, ready in that topic, or getting an A or B in the class, the proficiency is ninety-four percent in English, eighty-five percent in math, eighty-two percent in science. Much more acceptable, reasonable scores of what you would expect from a district. And now that's not a hundred percent. You say, well, what about, come on, I want to be a hundred percent. We know who those kids are that are between those numbers and a hundred percent. They're typically kids that are English language learners, special needs kids. We're tracking those kids. Those kids are not falling through the track, we know through the cracks. We know exactly who they are, and we're working with them to be successful. In fact, some of those kids are enrolling in college and being successful in college. So it's not, we're not letting kids fall behind. But again, when you think about test scores and hear test scores are declining, you need to understand, kind of like when you hear fire response times that maybe aren't, you know, you need to go and really look at what the real numbers are. And what you can see are some really impressive results. I'm retiring from the school board next month, so this is the last time I get to do this as a member of the school board. So thank you for letting me come over the years to give you updates. Are there any questions that I can answer?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why are they opting out of MCA tests now and when they?
Historically didn't.
Yeah, historically didn't. What's causing that?
They're just getting, they're taking more AP classes, and they're figuring out, oh, I can opt out. I don't know that, you know, it's, the social media is very strong, and so they hear about other kids opting out, and so they say, well, I can opt out too. It's a...
Can't we make it compulsory?
Absolutely not.
Why? The school district can't? It, for, tied to the grade in the class?
Because the state says the parents can opt, have their student opt out, and we can't override that.
So we need to communicate?
We're trying. They're trying very hard. And even, I mean, even, you know, the calculus teachers are saying, even though you took Algebra II two years ago, that's the score, we're going to run some, we're going to practice some Algebra II problems during calculus class. But again, if the students opt out, it just doesn't, it doesn't matter. But we're trying hard at the high school to get them to participate.
But in general, wasn't there an effect from COVID that did hurt learning and...
Everybody's scores went down a little bit during, I mean, across the state, across the country. Everybody's scores went down. And scores have been going down prior to COVID. I mean, so it's, we can blame COVID, but they were inching down a little bit before COVID too. Our MCA test scores have never been stellar. I mean, not, they've never been these kind of numbers. Again, some school districts do what's called teach you to the test. They can work really hard, especially for younger kids, to say, you know, here's fifth grade, here are the standards that you're going to get tested on, and we're going to drill you on those standards every single day prior to the test. And you can get really good MCA results if you do that. What you find from those schools, though, is that when their kids get into the more flexible stuff of high school stuff, their MCA scores, when they're not getting drilled, I mean, their other scores like AP classes or ACT are not all that great because they, you know, studied for the tests before.
So have the ACT scores, are they, remain consistent?
They're pretty consistent, yeah.
Or like?
Up or down a couple tenths or something, but yeah, pretty consistent. And if you look at our ACT scores compared to Wayzata, Minnetonka, Edina, Eden Prairie, Delano, we are, we are right, I mean, they're all right there at the same level.
Are SATs not a thing anymore?
What?
SAT?
Midwest.
Midwest.
Well, but that's historically true, but it's, it has, ACT has taken over the SAT even across the country. But what's happened, here's the other thing that's driven down ACT scores. Colleges are saying that they're test optional. So it used to be a kid would take an ACT and say, okay, that's all right. But then they would take it again to try to get their score up a little bit. Well, now if it's test optional, they don't take it that second or even third time. And so you get a little, it drifts down a little bit because it's not as important to the kids in getting into college than it used to be. And so, you know, if you don't get that great score in the college, that this college is test optional type, okay, why take it again? Again, they're smart consumers.
That's changed.
The market has said, this is the test that matters, and this is the one that doesn't.
I learned today that the ACT format is changing in the spring, where they're dropping science out of, or science will be optional in the ACT.
I've not heard that.
We just spoke with my daughter's counselor today, and she said, yeah.
I hadn't heard that.
With the MCAs and the ACT, does the school have students associated with each of those scores?
Yes, we, I mean, this is literally, we did this student, this is the second year in a row that we, we went back to the administration and said, prove it. You know, we looked at the MCA scores and said, prove it that there's this, and so they've literally gone student by student.
And you can correlate then the ACT with the MCA scores, either there's consistency in the...
Well, the kids that are opting out are, you know, are getting high ACT scores.
Yeah.
Getting, I mean, this, this is...
So the number we correlate is opting out?
Yes, it's opting out. It's opting out, yeah. We're not, it's, yeah, we're not, we have very few kids that don't hit one of these three criteria.
And you find that the ACT and MCA pretty correlated then when they...
Um, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. Again, the MCA is a Minnesota standard, so whereas the ACT is a national standard, so I'm not sure what the...
Similar to the test is, yeah.
I would speculate that the MCA is a little easier, because we're not, you know, across the state of Minnesota, we're not expecting everybody to go to college. Whereas the ACT is about a college readiness component.
Do they opt out even at the younger grades, because don't they test third? I forget what years they test.
They test almost every year.
Oh, do they? Okay.
It could be an older sibling that family goes on vacation, because it doesn't matter.
So do they opt out high school, the little kids?
The opting out is more high school, growing them out to middle school.
Okay.
But, and again, we are confident, I mean, again, as we, you look at that many kids that are taking AP classes successfully in the high school, they had to have been doing pretty good in elementary school to be able to be successful in high school. I mean, that's the, we measure that through their, through that. And if we were finding that there were failures in high school, it doesn't happen because their high school teacher was bad. It's because, you know, we're working back in elementary school to make sure that they're successful in being able to take those rigorous courses in high school.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, great presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And again, congratulations to the swim team.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks for your service, yeah. What's next? Can we talk into planning commission, park board?
I start on the Long Lake Park Board. That was my first...
I think we have an opening.
They're about to have an opening, yes.
Yeah.
I'm volunteer at IOCP. That's my, I'm the freezer guy at IOCP, so that's my stock board. Thank you very much.
Excellent, Mike.
Thank you.
Future. All right, any public comments?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Brian Miller, two ninety-five Lakeview Avenue. Since this is the week of Thanksgiving, I just wanted to stop by and give thanks to Mayor Minor, Councilmember Feldman, and Councilmember-elect Todd Newcomer for running for office again. And I have not checked the Long Lake election results. I assume Charlie...
Running on a post helps.
I think Santa got...
And I also want to say...
Didn't Danny get some votes, too?
I also want to say a special shout-out to John Divak, because it dawned on me that he is the longest-running council member since January two thousand fifteen.
Wow.
Wow.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but...
January two thousand fifteen, almost ten years coming up.
That's impressive.
Your work on the council has been admirable, and it's appreciated. And I know I'm one of the few residents that stops up here to say so, but you rest assured that everyone in my neighborhood feels the same way.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank this entire council and staff for your work with issues with the city of Orno. I don't know if you saw the drama, overly dramatic drama last night at Orno's council meeting, but, you know, since at least two thousand twenty-two, you guys have maintained just a great demeanor in handling the situation and professionalism, and it's been, I don't know, just, I think it's been very effective. And, and, I might have lost it. Very proud of how they handled it, very professional. And also a shout-out to Gina Joyce, who's wrapping up her career on the council. I don't know if she'll be back again for the next meeting or not, but...
Couple more to go.
Thank you for your service, too.
Thank you.
And, you know, I always love having an attorney on the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Jinx, jinx. All right, any other public or open correspondence? No? All right. Seven, rigor business. Seven A, updates regarding fire department matters. Just a couple of things, I think maybe we touched on this at the last meeting. Due to the election results in Orno, there's been a kind of a change in the guard over there. There will be, I know there's been some communications going on behind the scenes with legal teams, and that did lead to our trial date being pushed back. The case city of Long Lake versus the city of Orno has been pushed back from, I believe, a date in March to a date in July of two thousand twenty-five at this point. So just to give both sides a little more time to get together and negotiate, try to figure the situation out. And so there's court dock... Uh, that, so there's court document that dictates that. It's, uh, publicly available. And the date is officially been put, pushed back. And we look forward to the new Orno council, getting, sitting down with them and, and trying to. Resolve the situation outside of the courtroom and do what's best for both of our communities, all of our communities around us, including Medina, Minnetonka Beach, and any others. So very, uh, very good progress there. And, and we couldn't be happier that we can potentially resolve the situation out of court. Besides that, um, I mentioned a couple other, you know, events coming up with, uh, the, the, um, light up the night, light up the night. I think it's official term in Wayzata on Friday, um, a week from the, the Friday after Thanksgiving. Not, uh, just in a few days here. That's, I believe, at five fifteen start, and our Long Lake Fire Department's participating in a great parade there. And then the Long Lake Fire Department Auxiliary is hosting a toy drive with Santa and. And other great events going on at the Long Lake Fire Station, Station One on the Saturday. Uh, Sa- Saturday, December seventh, would it be? So, me, me, seventh, yep, seven. So we'll get more information on, on about that. Other than that, no major, uh, fire department updates that I can think of. Anybody else have any? Okay. With that, move on to item number eight, other business. Wrong, Councilmember Divac, or Council.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, um, uh, we had an LMCC meeting and, uh, there was a showcase of a conversation with Liz Olson. I think it's a video that's on their website and just wanted to, it, uh, kind of discusses her book that I think we all received a, um. Copy of. So I just wanted to talk to LMCC, and if you want to go look at the conversation with Liz. It, it takes place at the Pioneer Museum, and I don't know if there was a link on our, i- is there a link?
I, uh, actually had put up the link on our Facebook page a while ago, so, yep.
Well, it just came up at the meeting, so I thought I'd shout out. You might have said that before.
It's wonderful. It's really, really well done. They did a beautiful job.
Is, LMCC's in the, their new office space, right?
No.
No.
They, um, they're waiting till they sell their building.
Oh, okay.
And, and there were, a lot of things happened and the sale didn't go through and. Reasons why. One of his, Jerry Rock van passed away, but I think he had, he had pulled out before he passed away. It was kind of quick.
But haven't we done the improvements to, uh, public works for their?
Just the windows.
All windows.
Right, but, I mean, they're, they're still coming, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. When if they sell.
Yeah.
We need to do the windows anyways.
Badly.
Any updates on, um, Mid, Midco and discussions? You guys had LMCC, any conversations with Midco? Which is a fiber optic company that's.
You know, I, I don't really remember the details, because most of the business that happened was more directed to financing, the, the meeting we had. Um, but I know that they're coming in and I think they're talking to different communities. And I can't remember, off the top of my head, I can't remember which community.
Are they the ones that are going to do Orno?
Yes, or it's the. Oromeen last night, and a little bit of surprise here, I think. But, um, yeah, they, uh, they've. They've been talking to LMCC about doing all of the LMCC Partner Cities, um, and my conversations with their executive director from LMCC. And kind of, you know, it's, um, not imminent, but last I heard, they're working on a franchise agreement with them. That was probably two months ago. Potentially wiring the entire area served by LMCC, which would be really nice.
And Orno is not served by LMCC.
Correct. So this be, I guess, I didn't watch all of Orno's meeting yesterday, but this would be a separate agreement with Orno. And I think another city or two, maybe independents have, somebody has a separate agreement with Midco.
Yeah.
So that would be another option from MediaCom?
Correct, besides MediaCom.
I like competition.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right.
I'm good, thank you.
Feldman, all right, Councilmember Divac.
I'd like to say welcome to Hannah Jones, who was with us here for her AP Gov class, is that right? And I don't know who the other student is, but I assume you're a student as well. What, what's your name?
I'm Charlotte.
Charlotte.
Charlotte. Okay, I just want to say your name so your teacher knows. That you came. So, uh, welcome, um, to YouTube. And, uh, Mike Bash stole my thunder regarding the Orno, uh, girls swim and dive team, but very proud of them. And my daughter got to be part of that. Also wanted to say congrats to the Orno football team, because they made it to US Bank for the, um. Semi-final game, uh, in the state tournament, and they lost to Totino Grace, but, um, that was a pretty good accomplishment to get to the bank. And then, uh, and then I'd also just want to, um, give my sincere condolences to the Knudson family. Who lost their son Lucas, uh, brother and son Lucas, um, unbelievable loss and unimaginable. But, uh, but also I was really encouraged by the support that I saw from the whole Orno school family. Um, for each other. And I, I went to the memorial service at the gym on Sunday, and it was just, uh, really good turnout and. And just, I see, you know, I've got two kids in the high school and, and, uh, just seeing how they're just supporting each other, um. Uh, you know, just all the students and, and families of the students are, are just rallying around, so, um. It's, it's just, uh, again, it's just an unbelievable tragedy, but, uh. But just wanted to offer my condolences.
Thanks, Van John. Thanks you said. Um, one, for those of you watching at home, we cleared up an audio issue. I, hopefully this, this meeting there was, uh, a resident pointed out to me that they're listening to this via YouTube and. While they're doing yard work, which was great, that somebody would, would do that versus listening to music or, uh, a podcast or something. But, uh, there was, it was mono, it was only working one ear, so we've got that fixed hopefully as of tonight with the LMCC. We'll soon find out. But just, uh, if you're experiencing that issue, hopefully that'll be cleared up here now with a little hardware change that we did back there. And let Sav touch on, remind us about closures and other upcoming events and. Yeah, I guess. Oh, then, yeah, that, while we were talking about that, the decorating contest, we'll get some information out on that. All right, thanks. It's rejoice.
Yeah, so as you mentioned, um, Park Board's been planning the annual holiday tree lighting, so that will be next Friday, the sixth, at five thirty at Holbrook Park. So hope to see as many residents there as possible and have a fun night. Um, want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, thankful for city staff and council and to serve alongside of you. And thankful for our residents for trusting us and supporting us, especially the last two years. They've not been easy. But, uh, I'm, I'm proud of what we've done, so, um, and then December third meeting, I won't be able to attend. But I will be here for December seventeenth meeting. And that will be my last meeting, sadly, but.
Bring donuts?
Pizza? I can bring, yeah, we can bring treats, whatever.
Oh, your cookies, your.
Need to resurrect the grandad pothole cookie.
Right.
Yeah, one, one last time. Too bad it didn't get renamed with the six million dollar cookie. Um, but yeah, that's all I've got for now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Jeanette?
Um, I'll post quorum notices on those events and, uh, um, for the holiday tree lighting and the toy and food drive. And also, um, you probably received an invitation to, to a Orno school district retirement celebration. Honoring a couple retiring school board members there. So I think I'll post quorum notices for all three of those. And just happy Thanksgiving to all of you and all of yours.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I, I should say, one of the greatest things, you know, I've always wondered what would happen if I got hit by the proverbial bus. And I think we've found out in the last three weeks what that would look like, um. Because I, it, to some degree, I've been a little part-time of late while I've been trying to kick this little bug, so. Hopefully the end isn't sight, but very grateful to staff for being very supportive and helpful while that was going on.
I hope so too. Speed recovery.
Um, I'm sorry, for the next upcoming meetings, are there no work sessions?
Uh, well, that was more that we don't exactly know the start time.
Oh, okay.
I was kind of waiting to be sure nothing came out of this evening's work session that would impact planning. Um, we will be having a work session for sure on December third. Um, definitely five thirty, but it would have been five if there was other business that needed to be on it. Um, we are going to be going through utility rates a little bit and probably a little pre-chat about budget, I think. I would guess, Scott, right?
Cause that's the date we approved the budget for.
That's the date of the public presentation on the budget. The final vote on the budget will be on December seventeenth.
Okay.
So yes, that's, that's the plan. Um, December seventeenth. Also, again, didn't list a work session. Because I wasn't sure if we would be having an EDA meeting or not, so.
Got it. All right, that was good. Last call, buddy. All right, well, everybody have a great Thanksgiving. This short meeting tonight, and we will reconvene on, uh, Tuesday, December third. And if there's no objection, I'll adjourn the meeting by general consent. Very none, meeting's adjourned at six, or seven, ten PM. Do you know if, uh, remember that meeting last night, do you know of the?
Oh, he's coming home.